I will open up this meeting of the planning board for the town of Maynard. Today's date is October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is seven oh one P M. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. That means members of the community and planning board members can either participate here at town hall or virtually through the Zoom link. Tonight, we have all planning board members here in town hall. Bill, I don't see any members joining us online.
I don't see at the moment online.
Okay. I then I will skip the public comment for now. And we'll go, we'll open up. We'll skip item one. And we'll open up item two to determination of major minor modification for the Maynard Fire Department. And it says here that the Maynard Fire Department is requesting the planning board to make a determination if an additional area of a dumpster to the property constitutes a major or minor modification for the approved site plan. Do board members understand our role tonight, major, minor, modification? I think we've done this a handful of times recently. Okay. Um, Bill, do you want to give us a primer on this? Or do you want to turn it over to the fire chief?
You recall, we did the site plan for the fire department a few years back. It had one or two modifications. One was involving the parking on the street. I think everything is progressed pretty much according to plan. Uh, the chief has requested to utilize the dumpster rather than roll offs. Uh, I remember during the original hearings, there was discussion about whether they would actually need a dumpster or not. And and at this point, aesthetically, it certainly would be nicer to dumpsters are required to be screened according to our bylaws and and the chief has provided narrative and visual, but I will turn everything over to the chief. Um, I know comments from staff has been circulated among staff, nobody's any issues.
And would you mind introducing yourself for the record?
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Angela Lawless. I'm the fire chief for the town of Maynard.
Thank you. We have the visuals in front of us. Would you just walk us through uh, what we're looking at tonight? And Bill, we should pull up the these documents online so that other folks can see see the recording.
So clearly understanding, I came in big construction. So that's been a little bit of a challenge of trying to finish up this entire project and kind of coming in a little bit behind the eight ball. Uh, but basically, as we've moved in, there's been some things that we've discovered that are op- operationally not optimal. Um, I know that there was talk originally of putting a dumpster up on the upper parking levels. Um, and as my understanding and I agree upon, that parking area is very tight and it would have eliminated a parking space and would have been very um, operationally difficult for the trash removal company to get up there and take the trash out without being a disruption of everything. So um, this actually started when we first moved in. I did send a picture of our trash out this week. As you can see, there's I think about eight barrels, maybe nine barrels a week that get put out. Um, we did originally understanding that we want to be aesthetically pleasing in our new neighborhood. Um, try to line them up along a walkway right against the station so that they wouldn't be just out there floating in no man's land. And we quickly got infected with flies. So we have two rooms that are meant to be safe rooms for the communities that are open all the time. So if somebody had some sort of uh altercation or whatever and needed a safe point of refuge, they could come in there and you know, secure themselves in that section. And I went downstairs and if I told you there were a thousand flies, I'm not exaggerating. So quickly realized that that placement of the barrels was a bad idea and we put them uh kind of perpendicular out onto the apron. So and one, I think we just have this beautiful space and would like to keep it pretty. Um, and then two, it just it's been a challenge to get all of the barrels out there. Um, and as you can see, they're usually overflowing every week. So I just when I pull in and they're out there, I kind of cringe that I feel like it doesn't make us look like the best neighbors in the new neighborhood. Um, and then what tends to happen, and I'm not blaming the garbage company in any way, but there's so many of them that when they put the arm out to drop them, they inevitably skip a couple. I don't think it's anything other than do doing that. There's just numerous barrels. So then our overflowing trash gets more overflow. It just becomes more of a problem weekly. And of course, this is during perfect weather. So I'm concerned blocking the sidewalk through the winter once there's snowbanks and that contention all that. So we have a section of which I think you can see in your drawing that has a straight straight through for the oak trash truck. Um, and right now there's just a gravel pad there um, at the end where we could put in a cement pad. Um, it it wouldn't change any construction. It wouldn't change any of the heating flooring. It wouldn't change anything and engineerally. Um, put the dumpster pad there, which I think we have drawn at six by eight feet. The recommendation from Harvey is to do a two yard dumpster, which is about four feet. I I have the thing down there. Four by six feet, so smaller than the pad. Um, it wouldn't increase any cost or cause any cost to the town. Um, Harvey has done the thing to dump that without a problem. And where it is placed, even if we had an emergency at the same time as the trash truck being there, it's on the bays that house like our um brush truck and a utility truck. So it wouldn't change any of our operations. On worst case scenario of them being there when there was a fire or whatever. So to me, that seems like a good compromise.
That that can be it. It's okay. Yeah.
I mean, that's a lot of talk for a dumpster. Um, I obviously want everything to be pretty, so I would put a black fence around it and and follow all the body last touch.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. It's a trash dumpster?
Yes.
Does that mean the recycling is still going to go out every week?
We can put the recycling bins out. We don't have that much recycling. It's mostly food trash. We don't bring in like you know, we don't have water bottles. We all use reusable water bottles. So there's not a lot of recycling we get every week. So yes, we would still have the recycling bins.
Okay. And presumably those aren't like smelly or attracting of, you know.
I don't think so. I mean Dunkin' Donuts cups, plastic stuff. It's not usually any food stuff.
Other question?
Um, is there a dumpster location shown on the approved plans?
For the approved plans, do you recall if there's a dumpster location already shown?
I know originally it was in going to be in the upper parking lot and that was denied, I assume by your committee. When that was presented.
And don't be called. Do you recall?
It would have been like last.
You would have had to figure out where it goes.
If if because we kind of anticipated that might be an issue. Um, but that's where it was going to go first. And I can see now that we all have all of our cars in there that that would have been really tricky for the trash truck as well as it's it's tight to turn around and that it could have been damaged any of the car.
Why do you ask? What about there?
Well, I mean, if it was up there versus the proposed, then you know, this would definitely be a minor change because it's moving. It would be moving it away from residential butters to a parking lot of butter.
In terms of that, in my opinion, I mean, the location of the store, like that's where the cans are currently stored, right? Approximately in that area.
Yes.
I've seen them. Yeah. So I mean, and now they won't be on the street every week. So I think the butters, it'll be a better situation for them in terms of the residential butters.
I agree. We have this beautiful frontage, right? With all this landscaping and stuff. And as you can see with the can, it takes a significant part of that. We put them out Wednesday afternoon because we don't know how many calls we'll have or whether we'll be there. Yeah. So they're out there for Wednesday to Thursday at night. So.
Okay, Bill, um, does staff have a recommendation on minor versus major?
Staff, which is a minor modification. It's totally in the spirit of the design standards and improve minimal change. There's no um received the impact on traffic or anything like that. Just improvement. Mayor, probably something we should have done in the first place.
Uh, Bill Crenshaw had a question whether the approved current plans had a dumpster shown on it.
No.
Not at all.
I don't leave something. I gotta make sure of this. I think we discussed it and we decide and Chief Sowers, we were decided maybe he was used roll off, if I remember correctly. Let's see. Here's.
Um, while Bill's looking at that, I just more of a practical. I don't know. I don't think it impacts how I would vote on this, but um, how close is that to? I believe there's a transformer nearby.
Yeah, the transformer is fully protected by bollards.
Okay.
But where I had it, um, the architect or looked at it, it will fit right in between where the heated floor, the apron ends and where the bollards start. It almost looked like it was meant to be there.
Okay.
I think that would be the most practical place as well.
Um, I ask because I'm not fully familiar, but I believe there are some rules around how close other objects can be towards transformers. Maintenance wise, but I think there might be some other rules. So maybe just maybe just make sure that the architect is compliant with the proximity
Yeah.
to that. I'm not fully familiar with it. Sometimes, sometimes.
Nor am I.
Yeah.
But it was the same architect. You get it. So they're they're well aware. Yeah.
And then another small practical consideration is just the proximity to the retaining wall. Um, and we know with the whole trucking movement backing up going forward, you know, just making sure that all can be done in in a way that
Yeah, this would actually open that space up because now those barrels that we have out are on the inside of where that would be. So this would actually set that back even further. So.
And I see it's white cedar wood stockade fence is what's listed here.
Yeah, I I mean, I didn't look at what the architect put. I would personally aesthetically go with something black since it'll be up against that wrought iron or whatever material that is. I would do more though.
Okay, we don't have a standard.
I don't think we have a standard, so it's.
You can do whatever you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it would look better if it was darker colors.
Always hides a dumpster.
Yeah. All the white and features are black and all that. So.
I don't see anything with a dumpster.
Okay.
I if I remember, I could be wrong. It's so long ago now. It's I thought we talked about it and we said, we we were having some issues and we said, well, just we'll just use the roll offs and try that. And
that's the key. What argument say?
I do think originally what the discussion was with the proposal was to go towards the end of that parking space. And now in retrospect, I mean, the parking is tight, especially since we encouraged a lot of community meetings and stuff like we have now Girl Scouts and all that meet at there. So we do need all those spaces. So I agree with that decision.
All right. Any other um comments? From the board questions? Um, it's just typical what I'll ask. Is there any other information you want to present? Just want to make sure that we have the opportunity and get it all.
Um, regarding the dumpster, that's pretty much as far as she goes.
I thought so. I always ask, but I figured.
Yeah.
Um, okay, we'll take roll call. Oh, um, what's procedure here? Just a vote?
Head to a motion.
Motion and a vote on. Okay, so I'll make a motion to to consider this a minor modification.
I'll click on that.
Uh, and we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Bill Crenshaw.
Yes.
Natalie.
Yes.
Uh, I'm a yes. Um, and then
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Okay, Bill, it's five zero for a minor modification.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, chief.
That was pretty painful.
I'll send you a um, what I do versus the record. I send um, a letter and and beautiful and it's it's um and we'll just send it to the court.
And should should we expect updated design plans? Um, so we have an updated site plan for this?
Something board.
Yeah, I can though, because I believe the architect said the preliminary drawings and so now I'll go forth with the the block that's to be built.
My guess is probably working off of the old design set. So it probably would be pretty easy for him just to send over another complete set. It's just nice to have for the records.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Because anytime we need to talk about any modification or whatever planning board there's here, we'll have it.
Yeah. Because it could be years later.
We don't know. Hopefully.
Hopefully.
No offense, but.
There'd be people here saying, why do we have a dumpster, right?
And in my opinion, the architect can take off the white cedar wood
Okay.
and just leave it as
Whatever.
screening fence.
Right.
Yeah.
So if you just send me that and when you have a chance, you're probably gonna be.
Sure. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was nice meeting all of you that I have never met before. Thank you for my first experience of this.
It was not. Yeah. Well, we do. We do. When when you just you're asking about the process of what when we do public hearing, but actually for the regular hearing, you know. Um, you're in when I send you out the little packages that, you know,
Yes.
you guys throw this spam right like these.
No, I read that.
And and um, they um like that when comments come, I'll bring them and some occasionally they'll ask, they might ask you to, you know, come to a meeting if there's an issue or something.
I'm happy to attend.
But the comments typically will go to them and and ahead of time. Obviously, they'll find it and that's how it works.
Right. Well, I appreciate it. Phil had offered and he said, you're the only one up tonight, so you can zoom it. I said, absolutely not. I want to go to where the magic happens. Like if and this is my first time, I have to be in person, right? Now I've been ignited. So next time, maybe I'll zoom, but I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Let's go back to meeting minutes. I had one.
Okay, bye, man.
Any comments on the meeting minutes from September twelfth?
Make them approve the September twelfth.
I'll flag him up. Okay, yeah. Uh, all in favor of approving minutes from September twelfth by hand? Five zero, Bill, to the meeting minutes from September twelfth. Is that the agenda for tonight?
Yes. One announcement, um, November fifteenth. Um, we're having the public meeting for the powder mill corridor. I'm gonna have the draft circulated to you guys before. That should be fun. We're gonna do it. We're gonna try to do it at the Elks in person. Not not confirm yet. That's which might it.
How does everyone feel about that?
Yes.
Good all?
That'd be kind of fun and and be it out. Um, next week, we okay, yeah, next week we have um two to six powder mill. Um, they are at the zoning board Monday night on Zoom. The purpose of the zoning board is to um there's a variance that I would prefer they had before they went to you guys. And the variance is to allow um what's that? Is it twenty-five percent? A percentage it to exceed the normal percentage that we allow undercover of of parking. And it would be underneath the building, which is kind of good thing. I would, I would, you know, but um
It's the other way around. It's they have less ground floor uh, commercial space than allowed.
No, no, no.
And less total ground floor commercial space.
What when we we ran it through is that they they're okay with the commercial space. It was that there was too much parking undercover in the that was on under the building. And there's I I don't have a percentage of it.
Fifteen percent total.
Is it fifteen? No.
And no more of the ground floor footprint can be non-commercial space.
Oh, and they're making their ground floor footprint parking.
Correct.
Right. Okay, yeah.
Seventy-five percent parking.
So it's a it's a variance. It's little. It's we've never done one like this. So you're you're not doing it, but but you can, uh, just so you know what was going on. Um, and then our regular hearing is next Tuesday. And it'll be Harry Jeff will be sitting sitting in. Natalie's on vacation. Jeff is familiar with the project anyway. So um, so it'll be good. I will try to get a staff report. Uh, that's helpful to you guys.
Yes, we're gonna, we yeah, we we'll need a staff report on that.
Yeah.
Before the meeting.
Yeah, we while we have the townhouse is coming. Both of them. Uh, um, Mark Bobrowski is representing the applicant and Lisa's coming for us. So, uh, but I'll get I'll get a um, a staff report done off that spells out as best I can with it'd be interesting. Um, I can't talk too much about it now because we're not given. We haven't, uh, you know, we're not opposed to for tonight, but.
So that's on the twenty-fourth, um, November fifteenth. This is out. That's and that's going to be our second meeting in November, right?
Yeah, right now I don't think I don't hope we have anything in the first week in November. We were.
It's November first would be the other meeting.
We're the second. Uh, where is the second Tuesday? So it would be.
Okay. Got it.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. November fourteenth is the first meeting of November.
That's right.
The second meeting is November twenty-eighth.
So we may, depending on what we have. Um, well, we'll see.
So when can we get the A D U?
Yeah, well, that's that's the next question.
That pushes it into.
That's exactly where it's headed.
That pushes it into deep in December.
And.
Uh, we we should schedule that for the twenty-eighth. November twenty-eighth.
Well, then we should.
Right?
Which I.
And are you gonna? When are we gonna talk about as a board and stuff? It's not ready to go to hearing.
It's not. Well, I thought we could.
Hasn't been vetted.
I I thought I thought that the meeting we had about it would get us to a place where we could have a draft.
We do. We have it.
But we should talk.
We got it. Rick is looking at it right now.
We're looking at, but if there's any changes or, you know, the rest of the board wants to look at the draft and pick at it.
Got it.
It needs to be that opportunity and then it will be ready.
Okay.
Well, I can, if as soon as I get back from Rick, I'll circulate it to all of you.
So the very, I guess, the very first opportunity for that to happen is the twenty-eighth. November twenty-eighth.
Um, right, yeah, the hearing.
Yeah, no, um, to to regroup that.
Or to look at it.
To, yeah, and then.
That'd be too bad. Well, we don't need to. We don't need to group to look at it unless, I mean, we, I think what Bill's saying is we want everybody to review it. But we don't need to have a meeting for that. We can do that on the fly if you want it. Up to you guys.
I I thought.
Doesn't the board have to approve the version that goes to hearing?
Well, that, yeah, but I mean, they wouldn't. Like, if you bring, if you schedule a hearing and we have the draft of the the bylaw, we wouldn't have a hearing to have a hearing, right? We just we'd advertise that and we'd go from there. I'm saying if they have a chance to look at it in November sometime before then and we know what to advertise, I think we'll be okay.
Okay, we have to advertise the current version or can we advertise a version that gets changed between advertising and the hearing?
We would advertise. Well, we gambled. We did it. Uh, we want to advertise. But we'll see. When we get back from Rick, if there's if there's just minimal changes. Um, it'll circulate and I and I can just check in with everybody offline and see how they feel. And if we want to have another, we've got still got time. If we wanted to look at it and have a meeting together talking, oh, we could. Too.
Well, I mean, we got a bunch of other zoning stuff and
Well, we do.
You know, and all those hearings will show up and
Yeah.
and you know, if you if something comes up in the hearing and you need to change it and you need to change it in a certain way, then you gotta do another hearing.
Yes. Um, if we're going with you, well, if if we're tight, if we're loosening it up with you. That's why we want to, we want to make it as restrictive, but it's hard. It's hard right now because I don't know what we're expecting.
It was the other way around.
No, if if we said, for example, um, we're gonna have eighty U's in I don't know, about twelve hundred square feet, eighty is, and we said we advertise that. And then we ended up saying eighty U's or six hundred square feet. We wouldn't have to readvertise. If we went the other way, we would. So.
In that, yeah, in that.
Yeah, right.
The really buttered.
And then the other question, which is, uh, not Bill and Natalie's project, but the other one, I remember we have firearms too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we met, let's see if you know this, um.
I think that we can schedule for November twenty-eighth.
Firearms, I I I don't know. Do we want them in the same one or not?
I want to move on one of them.
Have we seen it? We haven't seen fire.
Firearms? No. It's it's a just, um.
Well, let's.
Rick has that too.
Let's do this. Let's figure out a schedule.
Powder mill. We got the M B T A zone.
Powder mill is not gonna be in November. And we could get these two done. Let me tell, let me catch you up on the firearms just real quick. I went, I met with the police. Where had there's some changes for them, met with the rotten gun club board. Sat with them, had their stuff in, met with, um, I don't know if I got with E B C yet. And now Rick is looking it over and then I'll get it to you guys. And that's it's it's just what we talked about. It's not really a big deal, but uh um, it shouldn't be.
Maybe maybe, Bill, maybe you and I will work the schedule a little bit better. And we'll get a schedule coming up for the next couple of months on these items.
Well.
I'm also looking at December. We have December twelfth as a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And December twenty-sixth, and that's typical. What, the twelfth?
No, Boxing Day.
Boxing Day.
The day after Christmas.
Well, it's tradition to cancel all meetings on Boxing Day, so.
Those Canadians.
A Canadian.
We could always, we could do another day too. Remember, we can always do a day if the board wants. It's not, you know.
First generation.
But I would feel, I mean, when you guys, when you researched, it was, you know, some some towns had no problem at all.
Yes. It seems like some towns have no problems at all and some people, some towns have long drawn out.
Yeah, it's just so hard to tell.
Yep.
Um, we're very good at writing zoning by law. I think that'd be fun.
I think we've done pretty well. I think we, I think.
So what I'm saying is, though, I as of now, we have a full meeting next week.
Next week we have.
Right?
Yeah, we also have the uh, um, there's a something small on there.
But that's a full agenda next week.
Yeah.
And then our first meeting in November is for the powder mill quarter initiative. Right?
Looks like it.
And that's the only item that's going to be on that agenda.
You don't think that'll be a continuation of two, six? You mean two, six is gonna make it from now?
They will continue, but I I'm I don't think we can continue to November fourteenth. They were hold holding this meeting at the Elks Club.
Yeah.
I think the whole meeting is going to be about
Yeah.
the main, the powder mill corridor initiative.
We've.
I don't think people are going to show up there to have us talk about meeting minutes and other things.
No, so you don't want to meet on the fourteenth and the fifteenth?
November, November fourteenth is
Fifteenth.
a Tuesday and that.
So that would be our typical day.
And that's when we're having the the powder mill quarter initiative.
No, Wednesday.
Oh, okay. That's what I'm missing. Got it.
Fifteenth is a Wednesday.
Okay. Okay.
So I mean, if um, let's see if we get any if we have anything on.
Okay.
But I now I'm thinking about it, if others who do so we had you running the A D U and and the firearms together.
If we have time, yeah, I think it's fine. Um, so let's talk more, Bill, and you and I will come up with a schedule because we only have a couple of meetings remaining this year that are available, I think, to us.
Well, scheduled, we but we, you know, we always had that for you. You know, if you want to do another night instead of Tuesday.
I would rather be efficient with our schedule. Yeah.
If Rick gets back both
Yeah.
both zoning changes with comments, then you can send it out to us and maybe we can
Right away.
maybe we can do a bunch of the Maybe we can do a bunch of the. A bunch of it offline and then come in and. Those meetings won't be as complex.
I think so, I think that's true. I mean, both of the. You guys know the gist of which each of these is and they, they, they did a super job getting the stuff ready with the ADU. The firearm had the changes, I just got back from the, um. Rotten Gun Club. All very practical, not, not, um, made in.
Okay, well. I think that's it.
Yes.
Would you like to do the honors?
Of course, I'm willing. Mister Chairman, I would like to make a motion to close tonight's meeting.
Thanks, Jim, I'll second that. All in favor by hand? It's five zero to close tonight's meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Do you mind stopping reporting?
What's that?
You mind stopping the reporting?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Do you want to talk more about being Canadian without being?
Yeah, it's.